Shreveport City Council will now be called to order. The Honorable Willie Bradford, Councilman, will now give us the invocation. And the Honorable Mike Corbin will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we come again, Lord, thanking you for this day and for another opportunity to come before the city as we transact the business of this city. We pray your blessings upon this meeting, Lord. May all that we do here be decent and in order. We pray for our citizens and for all of our elected officials who are partaking in the governance of this city. Thank you for allowing us to serve. And when we finish here today, Lord, we pray that everything we do here be pleasing in our sight. In our sight, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please now call the robe?
Councilor Everett.
President.
Councilor Everett.
Here.
Councilor Jenkins. Councilor Carter.
Present.
Councilor Ford.
Present.
Councilor Wondell Lynch. And Councilor Lobe.
Tomorrow, there will be a motion to approve the minutes of the former administrative conference Monday, June 11th, and the city council meeting of Tuesday, June 12th. Does at this time, any council member have any awards, recognitions, or single gifts not to exceed 15 minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I know it's on the agenda, but the Community Foundation have represented, would be in order to allow them to come up and present or make some remarks at this time.
Does any council member object?
Sure.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Please state your name for the record and address, please.
Kristy Gustafson, 717 Oak Hill Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106.
Now, we've visited and you asked in our correspondence, will you just give us sort of an overview of what it is that we're trying to accomplish?
Sure, yes, sir. So, I was approached at the end of 2017 by the current Chairman of the Board of the Cyport Center, who expressed some concerns about continuing and wanted to kind of discuss with the Community Foundation some possible solutions to help them out. They were having some financial troubles. So, we sat down together and over the course of months of putting together sort of a working group of folks to kind of put our heads together and to better understand the issues that Cyport faced. And ultimately, the current board of the entity that operates the Cyport Center determined that it would no longer be able to operate that center. And so, our proposal is simply, the Community Foundation, along with a number of other funders, has agreed to fund a new entity to manage what we know is the Children's Museum, Science Museum at the Cyport Center. So, that's in a nutshell while we're here. So, I guess, does anybody have any questions of me? I know I've spoken with some of you individually and answered some questions, but I'm happy to answer anything further.
I just want to say, I appreciated the transparency and open dialogue that we were able to have in the meeting, that it was me and another council member had a chance to ask some questions. I think there are a few things I want to know before a final vote, but I was really pleased with the information that we got so far. Appreciate y'all kind of stepping in to kind of help mediate this great asset for our community and look forward to working something out.
Sure, thank you. And I'll just say, as many of you know, the proposal now reflects that the Community Foundation will act as the fiscal sponsor for the new entity during the time period in which it's applying for tax-exempt status from the IRS. We'll be very involved with the new entity going forward, at least for the next year and likely for longer than that. So, I also want to introduce Whit Carruthers, who's here representing the Cyport Foundation Board, and he's part of our working group, and if you have any questions of him.
I'm Whit Carruthers, 934 Erie Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. And as I look around here, there were a lot of us who were working on this a long time ago, Councilman Bradford and Art, of course, you helped a lot back then, and then you all who've helped out Cyport along the way. Similarly, I was serving on the Cyport Foundation Board, which is completely independent from the operating board of the Science Center about a year ago, I guess, when we began to hear that there were problems. And so, since then, we've been working with the Community Foundation and others to figure out a plan to move Cyport forward, to serve the needs of our community in educating them as to science, technology, engineering, and math in the future. And Mr. Seltzer just reached over the seat and asked me, "What about the planetarium?" I told him I was not going to be on the new board. I could not speak to the planetarium. But I could tell you that when we first started about working on Cyport, we didn't know that in 2018, you'd be able to download a $3 app and have a planetarium on your telephone when you walked outdoors. So, there's still a need for education in our community for the STEM subjects. It's just different, and we need to make Cyport different to serve those needs. Thank you.
And let me just express my appreciation to you, Whit, and good to see you. I mean, my fear was that if we did not do something to initiate some activity in that building, you know, it would become a part of what we don't want to see in Shreveport. In the public-private partnership part is very appealing. Like Jeff said, we're going to be vetting and getting more information as we go, but I wanted just to have you express, you know, the interest in how we're going to fashion it and sort of program it and market it to be beneficial to the young people as well as...
Well, and I think that'll be for a lot of those decisions for the new board to decide. A little bit of history, you'll recall that when Cyport was first formed, it was funded essentially a third public funds, a third donated funds, and a third self-generated funds. Well, public funds are no longer that available, and in this community, it's getting tougher and tougher to get the private funds. I think that there are a lot of good ideas right now being floated to make Cyport generate more of its revenue on its own. The Community Foundation is taking the lead in identifying a number of private donors who are going to provide the seed capital to ensure that there's adequate capitalization to get the project off the ground. And from there, it's going to be up to the board, but it's also going to be up to our community. If we still want this, it's up to us to do it, and we'll all have to help in every way we can. Would you like to speak more specifically? You've been more involved in...
Sure, sure. Well, you know, let me say first, the reason I got involved with this is because I think Cyport is a really valuable resource for the children of this community, and particularly schoolchildren who may not otherwise be able to attend a facility like Cyport on their own. Having the school systems involved and having the kids get to go there on field trips and fill in some of their curriculum there is a fantastic resource and why I became involved. We've got a number of good ideas that are intended to reduce the expenses of Cyport, perhaps the number of employees needed, and increase the revenue that Cyport's able to bring in on a monthly basis, so it will be more self-sustaining. I mean, ultimately, if it could be entirely self-sustaining, that would be wonderful. I don't know if that's possible or not, but that's kind of where we're going, reduce spending and increase revenue. And, you know, I think when, because of the funding sources that were available when Cyport first began, and those funding sources going away, the business plan from the outset was no longer viable once those funding sources were removed. So, it was important that some adjustments be made and a new business plan come into play, so.
That's my understanding with the corporate agreement agreement, that you're going to, I mean, I'm saying you, I'm referring to...
The new entity.
The Community Foundation will sort of preside and oversee the transition...
That's right.
...of all the aspects of it.
That's right.
Boards and so forth. And assist them until they could stand on their own.
That's right. So, as fiscal sponsor, that'll be, kind of give us a dual role. For one, we can receive donations for the benefit of the Children's Museum, and people will get a tax deduction for that, you know, during the time period that the new entity has not received its tax-exempt status. And secondly, we will be convening with Cyport and its new director and new board on a weekly, monthly basis about their budget, about their revenues, and just making sure that we kind of hold their hand, for lack of a better term, financially for the next couple of years, and make sure that they feel like they're supported as much as they need. So, we intend to be there. It's really important to my board that we be heavily involved, so.
Okay, great. Again, this is just introduction of it today, and we have some time to vent it and communicate a little bit further, okay? That's all I have, Ms. Jim.
Thank you. When you mentioned the school system, I don't know the relationship that was previously established with Cyport and the superintendent or the school board. Do you all plan on having a better relationship or a good relationship with them or with Lamar Goree?
Yes, so I think originally, there were maybe some representatives from the various school parishes who participate in field trips involved in Cyport. I don't know, I don't think that's happened in recent years, so my thought was that we would approach the superintendents of probably Caddo, Bossier, and DeSota, at the very least, and ask them if they're interested in having somebody from their staff be involved in the board, maybe in either a non-voting or voting capacity. Because I think one of the real values of Cyport when it first began was that it helped to fill in curriculum for teachers when the children were there on field trips, and it also helped to train teachers in STEM areas. And that's super valuable to the community, and we want to make sure that the training that we're giving and the curriculum that we're giving is in keeping with what each of the parishes actually needs. So, it's really important that we have somebody there every step of the way with us, telling us, you know, "This is where we need some help. This is where we need some additional training and additional curriculum for the children that we've not been able to fill in," so.
Okay. All right. I do have one more question, I'm sorry. Why, as you...
At one point, there was a full-time educator jointly funded by both the Caddo and Bossier Parish School Systems, who office in Cyport to ensure that that sort of communication took place. Where that fell along the way, I don't know, but that's certainly something I think that the new group's going to be looking to break back.
Thank you. Councilman Bradford. Yeah, I just want to ask, in regards to the new board, I understand there will be a new board. Will you have any influence on how to, on the makeup of that board, or is that going to be determined by some other entities?
Yeah, we, the working group that I've been working with, has come up with a very good and comprehensive list of board members that are not only diverse racially, but as well as diverse in skill set and diverse in age, which I think is important. We have only secured the agreement of the person that we'd like to be the board chair at this point, because we thought it would be a little presumptuous before the council votes on this. So, we haven't approached this list yet to see if they would serve on the board, but I intend to be very persuasive in asking them to serve. So, you know, we are looking for both new, young, enthusiastic members, and then maybe a few folks who were involved in Cyport when it first inceptioned, so we don't lose that institutional knowledge. I think that'll be really important in going forward.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson. I'm Rand Fallbaum, and I'm sorry I was a little bit late, but I've been part of this working group with Kristy and Whit to try to stand this thing back up and get it back where it needs to be. So, I wanted to be sure and be here today to help answer any questions y'all might have. But I think there's been a lot, a lot of thoughtfulness put into this over the last couple, three months to try to get this right. And I think unfortunately, Cyport just kind of fell off the tracks, and a lot of us missed that it was headed in the wrong direction, and so we're, we've reached out to a lot of people in the community to have input, and this has been a great effort, I think, by the Community Foundation and others that were interested in Cyport way back in the beginning to try to get this fixed and have it be successful going forward, because it's important to our whole community. So, I wanted to be sure and be here to answer any questions anyone had also. Thank you.
No one else?
No. Thank you.
On behalf of all of us, thank you for your time. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there any other council member having on? Seeing none. Mr. Crawford?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Any communications?
Not today, possibly tomorrow, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Green? Anyone have anything for Mr. Green?
Mr. Jim, my question or inquiry may not be directed at Mr. Green, but I wrote my district, some parts of my district this morning, and I observed a lot of property standard issues, as well as some issues that maybe not contributed to property standards. A lot of the sidewalking and some of the adjudicated property is overgrown. Who would, who would, who would be the persons that would observe that? Mr. Crawford, you can answer that.
Sure.
Who would be the, who would be the persons that if overgrown sidewalking and so forth was existing in the areas, who would, should be noticing that and making those requests for service?
You know, whether it comes from a private citizen, which happens most of the time, or it comes from a council member, or it comes from one of our staff, who's out there, property standards inspectors are patrolling, there are property standards inspectors for each council district, so however we're notified, we're sure that we put it on the list. If they're already in a, in a cutting rotation, which a lot of the property standards are, or if there's some other areas that we've missed, perhaps, you know, however it's brought to our attention, we try to get to it as soon as possible.
And you do that. I wanted to congratulate you on that, but my question was, if some of the, some of the areas that I witnessed today, it appears to me that some city person should have noticed that. Who?
Yeah, and most of those, I'll let Terrence answer, and maybe Mike can come up, or the right-of-ways are on a rotation. It may be Mike will come up here and... So, if it's a city right-of-way that we're cutting on a regular basis, it should be on a rotation, whether it's seven days or 10 days or what have you. Mike, can you address that?
Yeah.
Let me see.
Anywhere specific it was, or just...
Well, I mean, I sent, I sent an inquiry this morning regarding Hershey Wilson.
Right, I saw it.
And I, I just couldn't believe that that was a 10-day worth of grass there. It seemed like it had been neglected. Who would be responsible for noticing that? Who would be? I would be. I mean, your department, but who? My department. Ernie Negretti. Streets and Drainage, right. Okay, so they should, they should have somebody out in the field patrolling and identifying some of these areas? Actually, the highway that you're talking about should be on rotation. It should be on rotation. Right, and it usually, I tell you, it's usually between 10 to 14 days before we get back. Did you observe, did you see the photos that I sent this morning? Yes, I did. Now, you wouldn't, you wouldn't think that was 10 days? It's possible. In fact, I've got some photos on my phone now where I took on 31, 32, when the grass was this high, and we sprayed it and mowed it, and I think, yeah, it was on the 14th, and I went by there today, and it's back up that high. So, yes, it's growing that fast. Give it some water, give it some sun, it's growing that fast. Okay?
Councilman Flur.
The, what I was talking about was out by Capital One Bank, you know, on Bert Coons and Sainsville Road. There's a lot next to it, and I want to commend y'all for that tire shop, they got theirs cleaned up, mowed, but like Mike said, it's going to jump back up. But it takes, on that lot next to me, it'll take you right, and I'm asking, it takes a letter and then 10 days, and then find out who owns, and then you get to cut it, right?
Right, well, this, we have the one-time notification. It's gone out, we won't have to notify them again. So, once we get out there, it's a done deal. We'll be able to put it, we'll be able to put it into a rotation.
And I wanted to comment that I really appreciate that fence problem that y'all got. That's been over quite a long time, but you all handled that, and they're out there putting that up, so I'm sure the citizens out there will greatly appreciate that. So, thank y'all.
You're welcome.
No one else? That's it?
Thank you, Terrence.
Mr. Crawford, any legislation to be added?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
We have the following executive appointments to be considered?
Mr. Chairman, if we could, if we could suspend the rules and bring up the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 appointments that will be consideration to add to the, add to the confirmation proceedings by the council, if we could bring them up today as we have normally done, before we get to those who will potentially be confirmed tomorrow, I'd ask that we could do that.
No problem.
Yeah, that's a consent. I think it's, I think it's a group.
To bring up the... Yeah. Yeah. Their motion already?
The appointments, I guess, are under the clerk's report.
They're under the clerk's report, yes.
You want to bring them up for the council?
Yeah. Customarily, we've been bringing them up at the beginning, so they don't have to suspend the whole meeting.
We need to, or...
I didn't know if it was...
Motion by Councilman Everston, and second by Councilman Bradford to suspend the rule. Motion carries with five and two out of ten.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor Tyler would like the council to consider the following personnel, if they will come up here as I call their name, and the first one can take the podium, and the other four can take a seat behind them, just to save time for confirmation for appointed positions within the city. Director of IT, Mark Santos. Assistant City Attorney, Brittany Bass Arby. Assistant City Engineer, Matthew D. Redman. Spar Division Manager, Ray Hill. And Spar Assistant to the Division Manager, Tina Williams. And so, the first one at the podium is no stranger to the council, been here for a while, is the nomination for IT Director for the council confirmation, Mark Santos.
Good afternoon, everyone. First off, of course, the mayor's not here, but I would like to thank the mayor and CAO Crawford for their confidence and support for this appointment, and I would also like to thank the council for their consideration of my appointment. I am a lifelong resident of the city of Shreveport. I graduated from Southwood High School in 1976. I graduated from LSU Shreveport in 1981. When I started at LSU Shreveport, the computer science program didn't even exist, so I was a math major. They started, they introduced the computer science, I thought it sounded pretty cool, so I got a degree in computer science from LSU Shreveport. I've been working in technology ever since the early 80s. I've worked for the city of Shreveport, I have 31 years of experience working for the city of Shreveport. I've worked under six different mayors so far. Until Dan Thomas retired recently, I worked under, my entire career here, under Dan Thomas' leadership. And in the last three years, I've worked as the deputy director, and now I'm currently the interim director of the IT Department. We've made a lot of accomplishments in the last few years. We still have some challenges and things to accomplish, and so I'm looking forward to working on those. I enjoy my job, I enjoy working for the city of Shreveport, I enjoy working under the current administration, and I look forward to all the challenges that are coming up in the near future. Any questions?
Councilman Flur.
Mr. Santos?
Yes, sir.
I wanted to say that you absolutely return your calls, and you do an excellent job since I have been on this council for three and a half years. And I just want to say thank you publicly. You do an outstanding job, you're an outstanding appointment, and I have so excited that you're being offered this position and look forward to working with you another four years.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Bradford.
Yeah, and I also expressed the same sentiments as the councilman did just now, but I thought the transition period, Mr. Crawford, that you guys provided, Mr. Santos and Mr. Thomas, was very valuable.
Yes.
I saw, I saw a lot of, I mean, his wealth of knowledge that he passed on to you in that interim time. But you mentioned some additional challenges. What would be some of those challenges that you just mentioned?
Well, you know, technology changes, and it changes a lot faster than government does. And so, we've, there's probably four areas that I'm going to be focusing on. One is the improvement of services and efficiency and cost just through technology. We need to look at cybersecurity. I need to look at staff development, again, because technology changes so quickly. And then the other is our disaster recovery and business assumption plan, just to making sure we follow through with those in the future.
In regards to the other entities that use this, this chamber, commission, MPC, who else?
That's it.
I think that's it.
That's it. Okay. What's the, what's the continuity in working relationships in ensuring that our technology and equipment is secure? Is there any, is there any challenges in regards to that, that issue, the issue of securing?
You're talking about securing our infrastructure, just in general?
I mean, I mean, do we have different servers when we leave out of, out of this, out of this washroom?
No, just for the council, no, everything just is to PCs directly, or that's all you have in there. There's no servers, there's no connectivity. All y'all have is internet, internet services provided through these, that's really the only...
But, but, but the city and the parish have two different technology centers, is that correct?
Yes, sir. We're completely unrelated when it comes to our technology, yes, sir.
But...
But you do share these...
But we share this, just this portion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And there's no, there's no issues with that?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Again, thank you, congratulations on being nominated for this position.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. From the assistant, from the city attorney's office, Assistant City Attorney Brittany Bass Arby. Ms. Arby.
Good afternoon. I am Brittany Bass Arby. In Mayor Tyler's absence, I would like to thank her for this appointment, and I'd like to thank you all in advance for your confirmation. I was born and raised here in Caddo Parish. I'm a 2004 graduate of Caddo Parish Magnet High School. After I completed my high school education, I went on to Baton Rouge, Louisiana, and I received my Bachelor's of Arts in Political Science. And then I went on to graduate school, and I have a Master's in Business Administration. And then I went to law school at Southern University Law Center, and where I obtained my Juris Doctorate. After I completed law school, I came back home to my hometown of Shreveport. I worked at Legal Services of North Louisiana as a law clerk, and after I finished there, currently I am a judicial law clerk at the First Judicial District Court under Judge Ramon Lafitte and Judge John Mosley. So, now I'm excited about the opportunity to serve the citizens of my hometown, Shreveport, Louisiana. And do you all have any questions?
We have Councilman Flur.
I don't know where Mr. Bradford gets all this good talent, but boy, I guess it's from Southern, huh? Who you think's going to win, Southern or Grand?
Of course, Southern.
Well, we want, we want to...
Make her answer hard questions.
We want to welcome you aboard, and so delighted that you've been nominated.
Thank you so much.
Councilman Bradford.
Yeah. Attorney, what, is there a specific area that this young lady would be assigned?
Yes, sir. She is replacing Shelby Grant in our prosecutor's office.
Okay.
So, she will be assigned to Mr. Mina Prosecution. We'll have a training regiment for her, as she has the ranks of our city prosecutor's office. And I always encourage my prosecutors and my assistant city attorneys, the administrative side, if you want to cross-train, or encourage them in fact, to cross-train if she wants to come downtown and work on projects down here, and has the capacity, the work capacity to do so, then of course, we'll include her in some of the administrative functions of our office as well.
All right, good. Be prepared to work in the prosecutor's office?
Yes, sir, I am.
All right, it's tough now, now, now.
I can handle it.
Okay.
It seemed like a good fit based on the resume. I thought it clicked encouraging, so good luck with it.
Thank you all so much. Thank you for your time.
It seems like you spent about an equal time in college as what I did. You just got out with a lot more degrees.
out with a lot more degrees.
That was a requirement by my parents in order to come home. Thank you for your time.
Glad to have you back home, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Arby.
Also tomorrow, and I spoke with the mayor about this, because of how the resignation fell, and the next council meeting, we'd like to start Ms. Bass on the first, so if the council would consider suspending the rules and maybe taking her confirmation up, we'd appreciate it in our office, because we do have three dockets that need to be managed. Considering the timeframe, we don't want to wait a full month before she's confirmed it.
Thank you, Will. From the Engineering Department, Assistant City Engineer, Matthew D. Redmond. Matt, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. I would like to thank Mayor Tyler for the appointment and the council for considering my confirmation. My name is Matthew Redmond. I grew up in Knoxville, Tennessee. I graduated from the University of Tennessee with a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering. I'm a licensed professional engineer and a certified floodplain manager. I moved to the Shreveport area in 2008. I was working with a consulting firm before I started with the city three years ago. I've worked in the drainage, private development portion of Engineering Division with, under Patrick Furlong and under the late Robert Westerman. So, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to lead the Drainage and Private Development Division as the Assistant City Engineer.
We have Councilman Flurry.
It's, my question is drainage is, seems like we've got tremendous amount of problems with drainage ditches in southern hills where they're eroding in the backside, and that pretty much causes that the whole thing have to be replaced, doesn't it?
Yes, for the, well, it really depends on the severity of the washout. A lot of times, a lot of our paved ditches were constructed quite a while ago. Some of the joints are losing their sealant, so you get a lot of soil loss there. There are some repair measures that you can do without having to completely replace it, but if the paved ditch is cracked and just severely broken, yeah, it's probably best and more cost-effective to replace it and do the repair that way.
That'll be coming, I'm sure, in this next budget that we work on, because we've got, and we have replaced some out there, but we've got more washouts, and it's going to, it's going to eventually have to be dealt with.
You are correct. Before I started working with the city, I did not realize how many paved ditches and drainage structures there are throughout the city, so when you start driving around, you notice a lot, and yes, I understand your concern.
Thank you.
Just, Mr. Crawford, I just wanted to know if I could speak to Mr. Furlong just after the meeting is fine, if that's okay?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thanks, Matt. From the Department of Spar, Division Manager, Ray Hill. Mr. Hill, come on up.
Good afternoon to everyone. Thank you, Mr. Crawford. I'd like to thank the mayor for appointing me to this position, and also thank the council for their consideration. My name is Ray Hill. I was born in Omaha, Nebraska, but I've been a product of Shreveport, Louisiana for the last, oh, I'd say 35 years. I am an ex-veteran for the military, the Army, also certified in air conditioning, heating, refrigeration, been a member of different organizations outside of the city of Shreveport prior to this. For the last 19 years, I have been an avid employee of the city of Shreveport in the Spar Maintenance Division.
Is it true that Shelley has a whip?
I haven't seen it as of yet, but it may well be there.
Nineteen years, I was just wondering if she ever pulled it out and put it back in sometime.
Time to time, I heard, but I haven't seen it.
All right. Seeing no one else?
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you.
Also, as Spar Assistant to the Division Manager, Tina Williams. Ms. Williams?
Good afternoon. I'm Tina Williams at 132 North Cleveland, Shreveport. Right out of high school, went into the Army, and then raised a family, and then decided to come to work, and I've been here since 1992. So I've got 26 years in with the city.
God, 1992 was 26 years ago.
A long time ago. I would like to thank the mayor for the appointment and for your consideration.
She gets the lucky one.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all coming up.
Mr. Chairman, you know, attorney made an observation that I think we need to consider in addition to the Assistant City Attorney. All of these nominees or appointments have a current, a current with the city. And in their capacity, I don't see any reason that we should hold them over as well. So tomorrow, let's consider suspending the rules and just bring them along.
Administration would support that and appreciates the recommendation, Mr. Bradford.
Do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Crawford, items to be adopted?
Did we pass public comments, and then we had confirmations and appointments for tomorrow? Did Mr. Thompson say those? I think that's what we were.
I have any comments? I mean, there's no requests?
Okay, no requests to speak. Confirmations and appointments for tomorrow?
I'm sorry?
The confirmations and appointments for tomorrow?
Ah, yeah, Mr. Patrick Furlong, Assistant City Engineer, David Smith, Superintendent of Solid Ways, Mr. Christopher Wilder, and Architectural and Engineering Select Committee, Mr. Christopher Cole.
We have all those, everything we need to go, so.
Great. Mr. Chairman, now we're under consent agenda legislation. These are resolutions to be adopted. Resolution 84 authorizes RKW Louisiana LLC at 9640 Wallace Lake Road to make a connection to the city of Shreveport's water and/or sewer systems. This is for a metered filling station along Wallace Road. It's not contiguous to the city limits, but we do have a 16-inch main that runs right in front of it.
What question on that?
Yes, sir.
Right, what is the size pipe that they normally hook up to the city?
It just depends on their need. It can be an eight-inch or a 12-inch, Patrick. If it's a commercial pipe, it could be a little bit bigger.
It varies in what you're saying.
Sure.
It does vary in the demand of how much water they need, if it's a house or a commercial development.
What is this one here?
This is going to be a little bit different. A contractor owns a property, and he wants to use it as a filling station to fill trucks, so it'll be, you know, high demand, so it'll be a larger pipe, probably six inches or something.
Sixteen?
Well, the main along the road is a 16-inch, so they'll tap it and probably come off of it with a six-inch or something, something around that size.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Crawford, please proceed.
Yes, sir. Regular agenda legislation, these are resolutions on second reading and final passage on which will require only one reading. Resolution 74 authorizes an amendment to the agreement authorized by ordinance 46 of 2010. This is for the Diesel Driving Academy, three, three-year extensions, $3,500 a month. The current lease expires in 2023. This will take them to 2032. Resolution 81 authorizes the submission of the 2018 Annual Action Plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. Resolution number 82 authorizes the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with South Central Planning and Development Commission for the use of the MyGovernment Online Software Solutions and other related software to execute any and all relative future documents and/or CEAs with SCP DC to carry out the intent of this resolution. Resolution 83 authorizes the mayor to execute an act of correction to a cash sale deed to include a waiver of the city's right to enter or use the surface of the property for any purposes related to the reservations of mineral rights. And then Resolution 85 honoring Holy Way Ministries Family Worship Center and declaring June 26, 2018, Holy Way Ministries Family Worship Center Day in the city of Shreveport.
Mr. Crawford, please proceed with introduction.
Moving right along. Introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to July 10, 2018. Resolution 86 authorizes the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with Shreveport Bossier Sports Commission. This is for the 2018 Powerboat Nationals that'll be here August 30 through September the 3rd. Resolution 87 authorizes the use of certain equipment by the North Shreveport Business Association. This is for their annual Heroes BBQ, October 25 and 26 of this year. Those proceeds go to fire, police, and the sheriff's departments locally. Resolution 88 authorizes the use of certain equipment by the Shreveport Bossier Sports Commission. This is for the Red River Balloon Rally and U.S. National Hot Air Balloon Championships at LSU S, July 13 through the 15th. Resolution 89 authorizes the use of certain equipment by Mount Olive Baptist Church for their homecoming celebration on November the 4th. And then Resolution 90 is what Mrs. Gustaf, uh, Sciport was talking about earlier. This is the authorization for the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with Red River Stems, Inc., to manage, operate, and use the Sciport Discovery Center to provide services to the public.
Any discussion? Saying no, Mr. Crawford?
Quiet group today. Introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to July 10, 2018. Ordinance 53 declares the city's intentions to establish temporary construction servitudes on certain adjudicated properties for the water and sewer consent decree project. Ordinance 54 declares the city's intention to establish permanent and temporary servitudes on certain adjudicated properties for the water and sewer consent decree projects. If you're wondering, 53 and 54 just represent two separate projects, and that's why they're listed separately. Ordinance 55 declares certain city equipment to be surplus and donating such equipment to the Louisiana State University of Shreveport. Those were some leftover bleachers that need some rehabilitation from the Cargill Park renovation that we had done earlier this year.
Okay. Seeing no question, no discussion. Mr. Crawford, please proceed with ordinances on second reading and final passage.
Ordnances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance number 30, to establish the city of Shreveport's Planning, Zoning, and Development Department, Shreveport PZ and D Department, along with the accompanying boards and commissions to assume the duties and responsibilities of the Shreveport Metropolitan Commission of Caddo Parish, its staff, and its ZBA, and exercise within the city limits of Shreveport to authorize and direct the city attorney to prepare the necessary ordinances and other legal documents, and to request the mayor to prepare the necessary organizational chart budgets and to hire personnel so that the Shreveport PZ and D Department can begin operations January the 1st, 2019. Ordinance 49. Ordinance 49 amends the 2018 capital improvements budget. This is a little over $101 million for water sewer projects. The sewer projects are related to the consent decree. Ordinance number 50 amends the 2018 general fund budget appropriating the funds authorized herein. This is the $75,000 for the project swim donation from the Hertz family. I will say that we've already received the first installation, and that $25,000 check is already in the bank, and we'll have two more of those coming. That will provide swim lessons for 1,400 Shreveport youth, and they have already started this summer. Ordinance number 51 authorizes the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor lease agreement of city-owned property located south of an adjacent to 6235 North Lake Shore Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71107 in Caddo Parish, to Deborah Ann Sharp and Rebecca Gail Sharp Stern leases for the purposes of leases to maintain and improve the subject property. Said property is not needed for public purposes and otherwise provided with respect thereto. And ordinance number 52 is to revise certain provisions of Chapter 38 of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordnances specifically revising Sections 38 through 61 relative to allowing the director of public work and his or her designate to increase or decrease the required 25-foot buffer between development and undeveloped tracks of acreage.
All right, we have Councilman Flurry.
My question, Councilman Bradford, when you were growing up, I was looking at that ordinance 50, Project Swim.
Yes, sir.
Exactly where did you learn to swim?
Lakeside, Lakeside Recations on Miles.
That looks like that'd be a good program there, $75,000 to help.
Sometime we went and swam in the Blue Hole, too.
Blue Hole?
Yeah. But we, but we didn't go down there until after we learned to swim.
So it looks like that'd be a good project.
Oh, it's a great project. It's a great project. And the reason, Mr. Flurry, is that, you know, some of the pools are not as accessible as they used to be, and a lot of the inner-city kids from low, moderate-income households don't have that opportunity to learn to swim. This would provide them with that, with those opportunities. I really congratulate this partnership, because, you know, we can't get enough of this type of wholesome activities to involve our youth in.
Did, was you required to wear floaties?
Not, not back then. Either you sunk or swam.
Somebody said he was walking on water out there.
Ron Jones was also over at Lakeside.
Mr. Thompson, is there any table legislation to be moved?
I'm not aware of it, Mr. Chairman.
We have two property.
We do. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Green is rapidly making his way to the podium.
And if, if we can save him some time on that first one, you know, that was the one that we hadn't heard back from the guy in a minute. We did hear back, he's got an engineering report that's going to take him a while to kind of work out the issues, but it's also safe while they do it. So we thought we would postpone it. So the report gives about a six-month window on it, and so what I'm thinking is going a little shorter than that to the first weekend in October, so that we can bring it back up when there's a little bit of time left to, you know, just make sure they're wrapping it up by the time they need to. So that would be my motion.
And I second.
To October 9, I believe is our person.
Motion to postpone.
Am I right on that date?
October 9.
Or is it October 8, maybe?
Eight.
Thank you. Yeah, that's my motion, October 8.
Motion to postpone by Councilman Everson and second by Councilman Flurry. Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with five, two absentee.
Okay, our second property is 3542 Claiborne Avenue. The owner has actually cleaned out the house by herself. And so she has asked for us to give her more time to have the structure demolished, seeing as though she cleaned out the amount of stuff that she did, as you can see, clear through there, all debris is gone from the property. What we have is a shell. She asked for 60 days to demolish the structure herself. I told her we didn't have a problem with it. The neighbors are fine with it, Mr. Johnson on one side, and she lives on the other side. I've spoken to him and Ms. Allison.
60 days?
To do it herself.
She, she seems able to.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So 60 days is good enough? Can we do 90? You on the safe side?
Hmm, no.
No, bring it back at 60 days.
Yeah, we leave it at 60 days.
Let's do that.
I mean, because there's no other person except for he and she, and there's no one behind it.
Okay, well, let's do this.
It's moved by the chair, seconded by.
Question? Question, Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Bradford?
How would we know if there's progress being made before the 60 days? Is there?
We ride by there.
I'm sorry?
Ride by there.
So if nothing is being, no progress is being made, what is, what is our options?
I mean, once we give her that 60 days, we give her that 60 days. If no progress is being made at the end of that 60 days, we're just going to go ahead on and proceed with the demolition. I'm saying that if 60 days is a long time. I mean, shouldn't, shouldn't some activity be, be going on, and you can give us a progress report? Uh, if you ask for it, but we will ride by during that period. I understand. And see, but as far as changing it, we can't change it, once you give it. Well, I mean, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm, and I understand what you're saying, but I, what I want to do is ask the council for the stipulation that we will get a progress report every 30 days, so that, so that we would know. I mean, I'm sure that if, if after the first month, that if she hasn't started some type of good faith efforts to start, to start to do something, then ain't nothing going to happen.
Well, the inspector in my area normally keeps me informed on houses or whatever, what not, being demolished, or if that person has done whatever, how far they've come on doing the work to their property, they normally call me and let me know. So, my inspector.
You okay with that?
I mean, but this is a single, uh, single.
But you understand my point? I mean, I'm saying if 60 days, if 60 days pass.
I mean, within two weeks, they'll let me know, hey, she's done X, Y, Z, and then the next two weeks, they'll let me know, hey, this has happened or this has not happened in that one time. And I can bring it back and let you all know, but she's always. And I can bring it back and let you all know, but she's always, I mean, they have always called and let me know.
That's fine. If you're, if you're being involved and you feel uncomfortable, then bring it back and we'll deal with it for next.
I think so. That's fine.
And we have enough our source.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
That's my point.
I agree.
If we got one that's committed, then we need to follow it through.
In the amount of time she cleaned all that out, that was in there, I believe she's-
Mr. Chairman, one way to do it and to put the person on notice is to say that here she has 60 days, provided reasonable progress is made in the demolition. And if it's not made, then the administration can bring it back to the council for further action.
Would, would that take a substitute motion?
Take a substitute motion.
I saw move that, that would be stipulated, a substitute motion that was just voiced by the clerk. That is, that there would be, there would be a period of, of, repeat that, Mr. Clerk.
That, that the owner has 60 days, provided reasonable progress is made, and if reasonable progress is not made during that period, the administration can bring it back to the council for further action. That way the individual will know that the city is gonna be monitoring.
And that's, 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 that's my intent, that they would know that we wanted to-
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak in regards to the first motion.
Right, I'm, I'm comfortable with at least 30. No, not comfortable with that, I'm comfortable with at least 30 days, but not with-
I mean, do we have a second on this?
Okay, I didn't get a second, so you? So we'll go along with, as you read before. We'll go along with the 60 days.
60 days?
It's been motion by the chair, seconded by Councilman Flurry. Any other discussion? Motion carries with four. One against and two absent. No other appeals? Mr. Thompson, are there any other appeals? I'm sorry.
No, sir.
Are there any reports from any other, any officers, boards, and areas?
I'd like to report a public safety event met today at 1:30 and we discussed downtown open containers and we discussed LED lighting, streetlights in Shreveport. And we have planned action on both to pursue some additional information, so it was a good meeting. And I plan on having property standards meeting in the very near future.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, is there a clerk's report?
I'm sorry?
Is there a clerk's report?
Uh, yes, sir. You've already heard from the appointments that the mayor has made. We also have an executive session this afternoon. It's Linus Mays versus City of Shreveport. It can start at 4 o'clock. I'm not sure that the city attorney will be ready at that time.
Outside counsel's on her way. I told her 4:30, but you all are so efficient today. So she's on her way now. She'll be here probably in the next two or three minutes.
So being kind of refreshing, sir, in that meeting.
I think the clerk provided water.
I have coffee.
I'm calling.
And coffee. Maybe a peppermint.
He did. He actually texted me what he wanted to say. If we get to that.
Do we do that now?
Okay. So, yeah, Rob Broussard was here. He left to go to another meeting, I think, but he wanted me to express his appreciation and recognize the Shreveport Police Department for doing an excellent job and brought more during the last couple of weeks. He wants to especially commend the apprehension of six or seven of the people that have been breaking into cars over there. So that was a, a good word from him and he just wanted to say thanks.
Good, good deal. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I didn't mention it to be, I think I mentioned it, but I just want to mention again, I think everyone is aware the mayor is on vacation this week, much needed. I think it's the first one she's taken in three years, three and a half years. Of course, she's keeping a close eye on everything. She is here in town, but I just wanted to let you know that. Passing along.
For the whole week?
For the whole week. Well, I think she's, I think she's coming in for a couple of meetings, but, but she's gonna try and get some, some R and R, much needed.
So don't call, call you.
That's right. Please.
If there's nothing else, then this means-
Do you want, do you want to know if she's out of state?
All I can say is no comment on that.
If there's nothing else, then-
No, I mean, to-
Public comment.
To go to the bag.
You got it on a special meeting.
It's a special meeting?
Oh, it's a special meeting. We're gonna turn this one.
Oh, it's a special meeting, okay.
And this meeting is adjourned.